We'll begin with Agenda Item Six, which is a preliminary resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of not to exceed $5,965,000 of general obligation community development bonds and certain related details. Agenda Item Six, first, Mr. Steve Smith.
My name is Steve Smith. I'm the Campus Dean for Midstate Technical College's Stevens Point Campus, and on behalf of our Board, our President John Clark, I can tell you that we're very, very excited about the opportunity that this proposal brings to college future students. We've been in the area, serving the Stevens Point, the Greater Stevens Point area, since actually 1911. And while our scope has greatly changed and what we do and how we go about doing it has greatly changed, our role is to continue to serve the residents of the Greater Stevens Point Portage County. Over the past six to eight years, that job has become significantly more difficult. As you're probably aware, we've really maximized our space on the Stevens Point campus. We've had some tremendous growth over the past 10 years. We've incrementally grown, but really, we can't grow anymore in Gerke Park. And thus, the opportunity that presents us and how we're very, very excited about how it will allow us to better serve the residents of this community. We're prepared to go forward. I left the Midstate Board meeting, which coincidentally met this evening at 5:30, and by quarter to six, they had passed the resolution that I believe you have in front of you in unanimous form. So I urge you to listen and learn. We have a lot to move through, but in the end, I think as it is being proposed, or as it is being proposed, will really solve a lot of things that have been ailing this community for a number of years. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Henry Corgar.
Henry Corgar, 3200 Water Street, Holiday Park. It's a shame that, Henry, an 84-year-old man, has to be here. I should be watching the council meeting on TV and sitting in my recliner chair and having a Tom and Jerry in my hand. But being a responsible citizen, I'm here and to voice my opinion for myself and I think for a lot of other taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Smith, with the good news that the Midstate will go into pennies, that one of the first positive things that we have for our mall. And we have many other positive things coming up for the mall. All we've got to do is put our heads together. You older persons have a lot of intelligence, a lot of smartness, otherwise you wouldn't be an older person. And we have to do a lot of listening, and there's a lot of smartness in Stevens Point here. All we've got to do is hopefully the mayor will call upon all these minds. Now, as far as, like, do some redesigning on the mall, now, we have a number of local architects in Stevens Point, and I don't think that the architects living in Green Bay, Madison, Milwaukee, Chicago, are any smarter than the local architects, because the local ones are smarter than the other ones, because they live here. So we've got a lot of good things that can happen for a mall. And number one, the main thing why I'm here tonight, I'm urging you older persons not to vote on this tonight, because $6 million is a lot of money, lots of money, and we don't want it delayed for 30 days. We want it delayed so we can have local input into this. Now, the mayor seems to want to come back real fast, vote on it quick, 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 quick. We can't do those things. This is too important. I don't know if our local newspapers has carried a lot of news about the paper mill, 360 jobs leaving Stevens Point. Those are high-paying jobs, and they're not here at all. And probably about $2 million, that might be in their local economy a year, and that gets turned around about seven times, seven years, and that it finally leaves the county. And so, that's $140 million. We're in a twice economy. We can't do those things. We don't tear down the rest of the mall. It's ridiculous. We've got a big parking lot out there. It's empty. And then, we want to have more parking and more green space there. We've got a lot of green space, and if you want to have green space and parking, we've got the lullaby land there. So we have to be careful on what we're doing here. This is the economy. We're not into a, we're in a recession, or you could call it depression. This is serious. We don't go around doing, we take our time. We don't do those things. I've been in business most of my life. I grew up in the retail business back in Shimpel Falls with my father, and you have to use common sense. I learned, I got a degree in common sense when I was a little kid. So we have to be careful. Now, the mayor told me three and a half years ago, after he was elected mayor, and he told me that, I was in his office, and he said, "We've got to tear down the mall." I said, "You've got to be kidding." I said, "Well, that's a beautiful building. What are you going to do with the mall?" And he said, "Put condos there." Now, I didn't want to be called a liar on this, because I was told that in his office. And so, and it looks like he's been working on this for a long time to tear down the mall. This is a beautiful building. We've got other things to do besides Midstate College there. That is important. So we could do a lot of things with the mall. So please, don't vote on this tonight. This is too, too, too important. You're going to have the majority of the city upset with you if you do that tonight. So, thank you for listening, and we've got to do a lot of listening, because Bishop's several, 20 years ago, probably, was in the paper. He said, "One of the problems in our nation today is that we don't listen." And we've got to do a lot of listening on these important projects. So, there's other things I want to talk about, but that's the main thing that we want to talk about. Delay this. Please delay it, and don't vote on this tonight, and don't say 30 days. Just delay it until we have input from the local people. It seems that we don't have-
Very good. Thank you, Henry.
-we're told about this when it's time to vote. We want to hear about this-
Henry.
...when the mayor hears about this six months ago or a year ago.
Thank you.
That's what we want to hear about it, the local people.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reed Rochelo, Agenda Item Six.
I suppose you can tell, I don't trust Mayor Halverson, and neither should you. One quality about the mayor that does stand out, the mayor's self-devotion and promotion, not the public's. You know, tonight, prime example, you know, he wants this council to rush out after three days' notice, the public, and commit the public to a, you know, $5.5 million bond. Oh, he's going to tell you, "Yeah, you know, if you can prove him wrong, then the bond doesn't go through." You know, it's like, we've got to prove him wrong. He doesn't have to prove himself right. Okay? You know, my guess is, I've been around this council and this city long enough, my guess is several of you aldermen have already been privy to the obvious mayor's backroom dealings here, closed sessions. And, you know, let me suggest to you, I'm looking at him, too. Let me suggest to some of you aldermen who are privy to this, and if you've known about this before the public has known about it, that's a violation of Wisconsin Public Meeting Law. And I would suggest you people, Malison, you're one of them, I'm glad you turned around, I suggest you recuse yourself tonight, because I'm getting serious about, I've been serious about this, but I'm talking to the state now, and you're talking, you've got big money now you're spending on this stuff, and all your manipulating these committees that you're on, the square committee, you know, this stuff is going to come to an end. So just, I'm going to warn you people, all you people who have known, and if you've known about this in closed sessions, let me tell you how it works. Everything you've discussed in closed sessions has got to be made available to the public so we can see what's been going on before you rush out tonight and vote on what the mayor wants you to do. Yeah, so he's got a good, you know, so it's an idea, maybe a good one, with the vocational school moving in. Well, let's not just take the first deal that comes in, let's explore it. Don't rush out and commit yourself to that tonight. You know, and this, keep, think of, this musical chairs he wants to play with all these tax-exempt businesses, you know? Hey, we've got a good organization, the, what is it, this Boys and Girls Club. Okay, so they're going to move into the Parks Department. The Parks Department is going to move into the former Midstate? They need all that room? Come on, think about that one. And then, Midstate's going to go down to our mall? Hey, that might be good, but, you know, Wiza, you've been talking about all those jobs. Where are all those jobs? You've got a few teachers, but besides that, we're supposed to give them money to remodel this thing, and then, it's a TIF. So, now they want to expand the TIF. When are we starting to get some money back into the coffers of the city, and when are we going to get some jobs with TIFs we're recreating to do? So this is what this is all about tonight. So, if this is really a good idea with Midstate moving in, you don't have to take the first offer, but it'll stand public scrutiny. And if it's such a good idea for them, they'll be here a month from now, or two months from now. You don't have to rush out tonight, because the mayor's going to tell you, "We've got to commit tonight," because they've got to get their planning done so that they can get, hey, just slow down. There may be a better offer out there. I've suggested, before getting schools in here, maybe the university would come in. Maybe it would be nice, wouldn't it be nice if somebody would actually come and spend their own money? You know? So now, you're thinking about moving that institution in there. Even if you're thinking about moving them in there, why tear down all those buildings in the middle? Those would make good offices. And this expansion of Third Street, did you ever go down and look at it? Well, Third Street runs right by the mayor's business, but it jogs. Third Street comes, jogs like this, right by, you know, Andrews Unlimited. And so, this makes no sense, because that's what he wants to do. He wants to get that road through there. I think there's some, stop and think about all this stuff before you, because that's what's going to happen tonight if you vote for this. So hopefully, there's six good aldermen here. I'm counting on you, Mr. Tribaduski, because you're saying that council members should be running this, this committee. Nsumo, Wiza, you know, Solwinski, Omira, Stroick, there's a couple here that I think still stand for representing the public.
Very good. Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Bill Yuchets.
My name is Bill Yuchets, 1301 Dubay Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I'd like to go on record, first of all, that two years ago, when the mayor and John Gardner had, Mr. Gardner had the meeting in the mall, I was the first person to say that I thought the highest and best use of the mall would be Midstate. And I think it's kind of coming to fruition, and I thank people for working in that direction. My feeling right now is that I've had some discussions with Director of Public Works, the mayor, and I kind of support the idea of at least having community input to the design. I think that there's other design alternatives that might not be as expensive. I think that I kind of like what Kathy Dugan said about the weather. She put the words in my mouth, is that people like to congregate, there's walkers in the mall, there's been church in the mall, there's been all kinds of different activities, Santa Claus or whatever. But the bottom line is, the weather is like it is tonight much of the time, and the mall right now presents community space. The next idea that I have is to make the corridors of the mall a city park. And I think that's just as good an idea as what we did when we said, "Let's put Midstate in there." And I think it's an asset to the community to have an enclosed space that people can use. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Dave Plaissance.
Dave Plaissance, 3241 Nicolai Court in Stevens Point. I read about this, and, you know, I've been up here before, and it seems like I'm always against everything. This item, I'm not overly set that it's not, it may be a good thing to do, but the timeframe of passing this so quickly just is a little concerning to me. A year ago at this time, Obamacare was passed through in three days. Pelosi was quoted as saying, "Let's get this passed through so we can read it." You guys need to, just like the public needs to, is really dig into some of these numbers and find out, is this really the numbers that we need to be looking at? There's a lot of money that's being spent. Take some time. This is not crucial. There's a bank involved, and it's my understanding, they'd like to get this done by the end of January. Well, I work at a bank, and I know other people at banks, too, and there's a lot of properties that are in foreclosure, and they'd love to get them done by the end of January, too. What's going to happen if we don't get it done by that time? There's a lot, nobody out there is going to buy it. We're sitting in the only position right now that anybody wants to do anything. We've got control, we can set our own plans, we can get more discussion. I'm a little disturbed with just a small number of people here today. I thought it'd be larger, but it is Christmas week, and it is snowing out right now. I think there's a lot more people that would like to hear about what is going on here. I'm looking at the situation as far as Midstate coming in. That sounds pretty good. I see a large amount of money that's going to them. It was my understanding on the radio on Thursday that they were planning on an expansion anyway. Are they putting the money that they were planning on that expansion into this project, too, and our money above it, or is it just all of our money? The Lullaby property, we bought that for over $100,000 more than it was purchased five or six years earlier for polluted land. We've got to learn from our history. We made mistakes with the mall. Give it a little bit of time right now, think it through, get some more public opinion. Thanks for your time, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Rich Summer.
Rich Summer, 4224 Janic Circle North. The media has presented this as redevelopment of the mall, but I want to be clear that this proposal is tearing down 80% of the mall before the tulips. That's what the proposal is. Now, I'm speaking to the people who are elected here. You're here because a certain number of people wanted you here, and that's called the public Just about two years ago, there was a meeting at the mall, and it appeared that the citizens overwhelmingly opposed demolishing the mall at that meeting. That was just two years ago. I've always been a proponent of creative reuse of existing buildings. The greenest building is the building that you already have. And I don't believe creative use has been extensively explored on the mall. And I believe that, again, as some other people have said, if you listen to the brain trust in the community, you may achieve all of the objectives, maybe a lot less expensive, and it may come out a lot better. I received a call today from a citizen who asked me to mention this, that they are concerned about the expense, the tax assessment of Midstate Technical College, and I did go and pick up my tax bill, and then, my tax bill said it went up 3.2%, which seems a little heavy for this economy. And I would think that a question that the citizenry should ask is, you know, with this whole thing, what will be the financial impact, you know, on the, what, on the community, what will Midstate have to assess? Okay, one final thing, talking about, well, I think I know, you'll know where I'm going here, but I own a building that is well over 100 years old. And I'd like to read a very short email that I have. It says, "Rich, I reran the numbers on the name apartments. The BTUs per square foot, per HHD, went from 1.72 to 2.78. That just means that there were two furnace, two gas supplies, and only one got in the first calculation." So, this number is still very good for a building that age. I see many far newer buildings with much higher numbers. Okay? So if you're concerned about energy efficiency of the mall, I don't think we've even begun to explore the things that we do. But leave you with one last thought, creative reuse of existing buildings. When I bought this building, and when, it's well over 100 years old, it was insulated from mattresses picked up off the street. So I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, John Brown.
John Brown, 2132 McCulloch Street. Again, like, thanks for this opportunity to address the council. I know this is not the standard practice throughout the state, and I really think the comments we've heard tonight show that there's information we gathered from public at large that this opportunity affords. I don't think you'll find any argument for people in the community about the quality of institutions involved in this deal. I mean, the good works the Boys and Girls Club does, the education that Midstate Technical College provides for adults and young adults in our community, and the overall, you know, details of this particular deal, I think you'll find broad support for that. I think the thing, as I just was drawn, you don't see me every council meeting or whatever, but I saw, read the paper and thought I should come down here just as a citizen. The country is founded on one citizen, one vote, and I thought I'd come down here and talk to you guys. I've done some study of the past TIF agreements in this city, and have looked at various different details of them for properties and businesses that we've extended public incentives to in the past, and have seen, you know, various different things in there as far as guarantees that the city's interests are protected, backed up by private money or guarantees of increment regardless of the property value as the district extends. I'm just encouraging all the council members to take, do something similar ideas, and really study what TIF financing means long-term, what the bond market's like right now, what Wall Street's look is on municipal bonds as time goes forward. Try to look two years into the future to the overall valuation of the city. And I don't know many details about this deal, but that's what I came down here to find out, is how are we going to pay for the muddening of $5.8 million? And I think I consider some other people's sentiments, that's serious change, most likely more than I will see in my working life. And I encourage you just to study up on that and look at it. I think it's a very serious issue for the future finance of this city. And the other thing is, I guess, just to state publicly, I just read through the packet today, and even if the, if for some reason the citizenry disagrees with the actions taken tonight, as far as if you vote yes in favor of this bond issuance, there is a 30-day period where signatures can be gathered from the citizenry at a threshold of 10% of the last votes in the last municipal election, or the last election for governor, and we can take it to referendum. So you are elected representative of the citizenry, but we actually do on this issue because I think previous people in government thought it was an important enough issue that we, as a citizenry, can't act on our own. So I wish you guys good luck, and I'm looking forward to hearing more information.
Very good. Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Sarah Robinson.
Hi, Sarah Robinson, 1600 Fremont Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Association of Downtown Businesses. I would like to endorse this project with hopes of welcoming Midstate Technical College to our downtown. One of the main focuses of our organization is business recruitment and retention within the downtown district. The first question I am asked almost always when meeting with a potential business owner in and out of our district is always, "What are you going to do about the mall?" In fact, it's the question I receive when I meet with almost anyone who knows what I do. The nearly vacant property at 1201 Third Court has struggled for years. We all know that if we've been in this community. With each business that has left, each investment that has pulled out, a negative shadow has grown around the property, one that has touched almost every piece of the district I represent. If there's one thing I've learned in my time downtown, it's that perception is reality. If our community feels downtown is dead, it is. It doesn't matter how many new businesses open, new jobs are created, events we have, how much my organization puts into marketing, it really, it's still, that perception is there. We know through conversations with community leaders, visitors, and downtown business owners that the mall has greatly contributed to this perception. This project, we believe, provides an opportunity to combat that mistaken perception. MST is a solid member of our community, one that if we are going to invest, I believe we should invest in our own community's successes. In addition to a great adaptive reuse project for a failed property, the entire project also provides an opportunity for the Fox to have expansion and to create a connect of north-south roads for the downtown. Their student population also has the potential to increase foot traffic, businesses and word of mouth surrounding the impressive accomplishments that we have seen downtown in the last five years. As I was preparing my remarks for this evening, I realized I couldn't get up here and speak just from a downtown perspective. As a Stevens Point resident, taxpayer, community member for the last eight years, I have to look at it from that whole total view as well. The potential this project holds isn't just for downtown or MSTC, but it's also for the Boys and Girls Club, that is a solid partner in our community for youths and families at all economic spectrums. I urge you to move forward with this project, providing our community an opportunity for growth. Choosing not to do anything, it may seem safe, choosing not to do anything may aid in a political message, but there is no one else who is out there looking for solutions for this property or for our community. I look forward to the day when I'm able to meet with individuals looking to open new and exciting businesses in our district, and the question I get asked is about the exciting opportunities that MSTC, MSTC, excuse me, development project is creating instead of, "What are our plans for a vacant mall?" Thank you.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Joshua Garby.
Hello, Joshua Garby, 324 Indiana Avenue North. Seen a lot of good input tonight from everyone that came, and, you know, this is the city of the people, and that's a good thing. Everyone should have input. Want to quote something from what I read in the paper with the mayor speaking. He said, "We haven't seen a project of this magnitude for nearly 30 years." It's a long time. Longer than I've been alive. And, you know, that's a long time. So, take some time in this decision. It doesn't need to be made now. We've heard that time and time again tonight. We have also heard about a referendum. If you want people's input, why don't we give it to the people and take it to referendum and let everyone decide? Thank you.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Bernice Sevenek.
Bernice Sevenek, 1324 Fourth Avenue, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Excuse me. I've been a resident of the city for over 51 years, and never thought I'd be coming to so many meetings when I didn't have to. Oh, well. I want to just compliment everybody that has spoken here tonight. They do have some good things to say. I agree with most of them. There are a few I don't agree with, but we're allowed to do those things in the country that we live in. I recall a few years ago when Midstate was going to expand on the property on Michigan that they sit on right now, and the question was put to them at this time, and I have no ill-fearing to you, but I was on the council at that time. And they were asked at that time if, wouldn't they consider looking at another site, because Gerke Park was getting kind of cramped in fall? And did they think that they could stay there even though they did this expansion? And they said, "Oh, definitely, we can stay here." So they went ahead, and they did that expansion that they have, and they're living with it today. Here we are today, another expansion. You know, maybe they should have moved to a different place at that time when they were considering it, but they wanted to stay where they were because of the university, because of the area that they were in, and everybody knew where it was and how to get there. Some cities do have universities or colleges in their downtown area, and I can think of the main one is Madison and Milwaukee, and certainly are millions of other cities that have that. But right now, I don't know if this is a good time for us to buy bonds for this tremendous amount of money to do these things. Granted, some of it may be good, but some of it may not be good. We have close to 500 to 600 people that are going to be unemployed- people that are going to be unemployed in the very near future. Maybe they will be here for a while yet. They will find other jobs in which they can support their families or support themselves. But if they don't, what's going to happen and how are we going to start paying for some of these things that we are doing? I'm wondering too, in reading the article in the Gazette, if the city is giving all this property away for a dollar, my husband still wants to buy some for a dollar, and I'm sure we could find something to do with it. I don't know if you happened to have any time last night and watched 60 Minutes. There was a lady on 60 Minutes that talked about the day of reckoning that's coming within a year or so, and what she was talking about was states and municipalities that have overextended themselves with credit to do certain things, and that they are going to be, if they're not seeing a bind, which some states apparently are right now, and I'm sure that all these people that are involved in government know who those states are. But she said in the next year, she could, you can predict that there is going to be a big crash of municipalities and states that have overextended themselves, can't pay their bills, and are, what are we going to do? And we, the taxpayers, are going to be the ones dealing with these problems at that time. There was a new word on the news tonight, and this word came up in the dictionary this last year, austerity, austerity, A-U-S-T-E-R-I-T-Y. It's a new word for 2010, and it means force economy. I think that's probably what we're doing. Economy and in times like this right now have to be very carefully looked at and decided before you jump into a project. So think about this project. This is a lot of money. It's almost like the federal government. It's a lot of money, and they've overspent theirs. Thank you.
Thank you. Also under Agenda Item Six, Bernard Koper.
Bernard Koper, 1400 West River Drive, Stevens Point, lifelong resident of Stevens Point. Wow. What do we say about this? First off, I don't know, I've been doing a lot of research on this today mostly, but reviewing the state statutes, a couple of things, if the technical college was to need money to create a new site, they'd have to go to referendum. That's the only way they could get money. 1.8 million, it's really more than 1.8 million because we're giving them the J.C. Penney Building and the other property for free. So, or for $1 or whatever. So how many millions are we as a taxpayer doing for them, which is nothing wrong with it. I think necessarily not a bad concept in general to have Midstate there. Like people have said, a couple of years ago, that was, you know, suggested, okay? But why are we tearing down, you know, what's left over? Right now, Midstate says, "Hey, we're going from 30,000 square feet to 56,000 square feet with the new mall." What about 10 years from now? Five years from now, are they going to need another 10,000? Another 20,000? Okay? Where are they going to go in that spot? We've closed them in. They're not going to be able to come on the square. They're not going to be able to go out. They're going to need that for parking. They're going to have to go across Third Street to a new building, to Durham or something. It's already there. If you want to give me the remainder of the mall for a dollar, I'll take it. Okay? Don't tear it down. Save taxpayers a million. Okay? I'm sure you can find anybody to take it for that. Okay? And they'll gladly pay the taxes. It says it at a million. Okay? Gladly pay the taxes and keep it heated. I'm sure we can find something to do with it as citizens. Now, the gentleman here mentioned that borrowing this kind of money requires, you know, would be in 30 days from now, we can go to referendum. But I want yous to know that I intend to put my resources, if this passes this evening without getting public input four days before Christmas, that this comes before you people, four days before Christmas. Can you imagine that? Okay? This kind of money, without any public input whatsoever, I plan to put my time and my financial resources behind whatever it takes to go for that referendum in the next 30 days. Okay? And we're going to find out exactly everything that's behind this. We need to slow down. Take the step-by-step, let the public look at this again. I stood in the mall two years ago with the mayor and many of the council members here, and overwhelmingly, those people didn't want to see that space torn down. He says, "Do you want to see this all gone?" And everybody says, "No, not really." Okay? So, you know, a street, we're talking, putting the street in. We got a lot of streets downtown Stevens Point. We don't need to be maintaining any more streets or any more parking lots. Plenty of empty stalls down there since, you know, since the insurance company, AIG, moved out. Okay? So, I mean, there's a lot of empty spaces downtown Stevens Point, and we really need to slow down at this. And I ask you people in good faith, with Christmas coming, let the public have their say with this property. Okay? One plan is not the only plan. There's a number of other things that can be done. I'm not saying this is bad. I think it may have some very, very good merits, but let's not box ourselves in. Okay? And it probably can be done for millions less. That's the key. This is a, by the list, what I've seen in the paper, there's like a $2 million slush fund here. Okay? In other words, money to be spent any way they want to spend it. Another 800,000 for Durham maybe, or whatever, and some other money. I don't know. This is just a government, you know, grab bag of money. And there's a proposed building, tear down a brand-new building and build another building next to Durham Sports for somebody. Hello? I mean, how many big boxes, empty big boxes do you want? Okay? I mean, basically the same size Durham Sports. They want to build a building. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know who's thinking these things. Okay? What if Schaco decides to leave? Has anybody thought of that? Okay? You know, they do have a store in Plover. We do not have the finances. She said about 60 Minutes, that floored me the other day. I think, I mean, we don't have the finances to borrow this kind of money without, but as I said, if the council doesn't see it in their wisdom to slow this down, table it, that public, have a couple of public hearings. I intend to go forward, spend whatever resources I have to, gather as many people as I possibly can, because the public doesn't really know about this, but they will. They will know about this. They're going to know everything about it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also under Agenda Item Six, Kathy Dugan.
615 Summers, Kathy Dugan. I want to go on record in support of the current proposal to repurpose the Moribund Mall Building in Stevens Point's downtown. Midstate Technical College has planned to move to the former J.C. Penney Building and the west wing of the mall. The city's plan to purchase and market the old Dunham Sports. The city's proposal to remove sections of the mall, to rebuild north-south streets and connect Main Street with Center Point Drive in the north side neighborhood, as well as to add interior parking plus a large green space behind the children's museum. All of these ideas for reclaiming the mall area will spark new economic activity and new community spirit, renewed community spirit in the downtown. I encourage the council and Stevens Point taxpayers to support this plan for enhancing the heart of our city. And I want to speak for a second on two points that I've heard several times here tonight. In reference to borrowing nearly $6 million to begin the reclamation of the mall area, this isn't actually a lot of money. We have borrowed a great deal more for a water and sewer project this past year, something that the public has not talked about much, but it's certainly been publicized. This is not a tremendous amount of money. Cities, municipalities do borrow tremendous amounts of money, and this is not tremendous, to do things that they feel are important. Number two, Sarah Robinson of the Main Street Program and ADB, Association of Downtown Businesses, talked about the perception is reality. The perception, she claims, is that downtown is dead or dying. Well, perception is reality is Madison Avenue speak, business speak, sorry, business folks. It's marketing speak. In other words, you know, let's make it look like something and then people will believe it. That's not going on here. Complete, accurate, factual evidence, that's reality, not what something appears to be. And the evidence shows that downtown is not dead. All you have to do is look at the vitality on Main Street. Downtown only appears to be dead when you look at it from Center Point Drive, when you have to look at that brick wall going for blocks and blocks that is the north side of the mall building. Let me end with an example. A business purchased a large historic home on Main Street, a prairie-style house. Most of you know it. It's across from what we call the castle. Just a couple of years ago, they renovated it under Historic Preservation Design Review Guidelines. It's a fairly active business, redevelopment business. I asked the owner at one of the meetings that he attended, city meetings, why he wanted to locate downtown. Most fairly good-sized businesses want to go into the business park or into some suburban area. He said downtown is where the activity is, and we want to be where there's activity. Downtown isn't dead. And if you go by that person's parking lot, you'll note that there are cars there frequently. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. That exhausts the speaker's list for Agenda Item Six. We'll take that back to the common council for your comments and questions. Yes, President Strike.
Mayor, at the Thursday meeting, or I believe it was Thursday, when you made the announcement, you stated that this was, one, this is really the first of, I believe, 10 public meetings regarding this topic before any actions would be set into motion. Could you take a minute to expound on that, please?
Sure. This is the first step, which is a preliminary resolution, which is to start the process to possibly sell and secure bonds, which would be after a 30-day window has closed. You've heard references to that 30-day window from folks that had been here and had spoken from the public. That 30-day process would be starting once that preliminary resolution is signed. That is only a preliminary resolution. We would have to levy a final resolution, and we would have to sell and then actually authorize the sale of bonds and then actually approve the sale of those bonds after the 30-day period if we would have to ultimately go out and bond for that money and actually make it official, to the point where the bond would have actually been sold on the open market. This is but the first step of many that would have to happen. The Joint Review Board would have to amend the TIF district and then put this area back into the TIF, into the TIF district. The TIF plan would have to be amended to be able to speak to this acquisition and also be able to speak to the project, the Plan Commission, the Finance Committee, the Historic Design Review Commission, the CDA separately, and then jointly with the common council on probably three different items just on their own, plus the ultimate final approval of all of these individual issues before the common council for its ultimate approval. So there are a variety of different public meetings that will have to happen in order for the final approval of any of this to be able to move forward. This is simply the first of many public meetings and many public conversations that we should be having, certainly on this topic over the next 30 days. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
With that, and based on that, and the fact that this is a preliminary resolution, I am going to make a motion to approve this, authorizing the sale and issuance of not to exceed $5.965 million in general obligation community development bonds and the certain related details.
Okay. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person, O'Meara. Other comments and questions from the council. Mr. Weesa.
Thank you. Several questions in regards to the bond allocation, the estimates for that 5.965 million.
Yes.
The mall's assessed value, and when I say mall, I mean the core, not including the former Dunham's stage building, whatever, and of course, not including Schaco, the assessed value in 2010 was just over $1 million. Yet, we're looking at acquisition costs of $1.875 million. The Dunham's assessed value, or what we're calling Dunham's, is $268,500 in 2010. Yet, the Dunham's acquisition on the bond allocation is $694,000. Seems like we're overpaying for a lot of these properties. Can you tell me how we arrived at those numbers so much more than the assessed values?
The conversations that we had had with the bank in how we settle at the $1.875 million for the mall acquisition, we had started with the bank significantly higher than that, at the 2.7, 2.5. I called to reiterate again with the bank actually what the balance owed to them by the Dial Corporation is. So I asked him that question to make sure that I had that information again for you, reiterating that with Mr. Janney. And he indicated that the total amount that's actually owed by Dial to the bank is $3 million. The amount that is of only principal, after I asked him, "Does that include interest and any penalties associated with the foreclosure?" His answer was yes. And I said, "Well, what's the principal amount that's actually owed?" And that number is 2.49 million. Okay? So we had then talked for quite some time about a number which would be right around 2.3 million with the bank. We then came back and said, "Well, we wanted to counter," and came down significantly lower than that, and then ultimately agreed at $1.875 million for the acquisition of that particular facility. So that was a very lengthy process, working with the bank to get their number to a point where, just in principle, lest the interest and fees do, they're losing approximately $500,000 of the principal, plus or less any deficiencies, of course, that they cannot, that they cannot claim from Dial or any of the other personal guarantors on that loan. So that's how we came to the $1.875 million. The number that you see associated with the Dunham's building is but a placeholder. Those conversations are ongoing, and we have not come to a final agreement on to exactly what the specific acquisition of that is. And of course, that's the element of this that also takes the form of a legal settlement and is something that we're not going to go into in detail.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know that it's our responsibility to get the bank out of their upside-down mortgage, but I'm not opposed to the project. I want to be clear on that. I just want answers to some of these numbers. The first time council collectively was given this potential proposal was December 6th, so I've been in a rush trying to figure out what everything means, and I thank the mayor for his time and all of the city staff for meeting with me when they could. The Midstate Building, I know Mr. Sebers was working on some information today. Would he be available to answer some questions in regards to that?
Mr. Sebers?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Is, did you compile this one as well, right?
No, that is...
We got a handout from, it says, "Midstate Technical College, Stevens Point Building and Site Improvements."
That's from Michael Estruski. Those are an itemization of building improvements, renovations, and investments that Midstate as an entity has put into the building on Michigan Avenue.
Okay. All right. Good, because that's one of the questions I had. We've got some depreciation costs on there. How are those calculated? And the net book value, how are those calculated by Michael?
I would assume straight depreciation by Midstate's financial department, because under GASP, that's going to be the depreciation that they're using, which would be, I'm sure, a straight line. John could speak to that more directly, but that's the depreciation that Midstate is using on their books depreciating the value of the building.
Is that true? I mean, is that what those numbers are?
Twenty-five-year depreciation.
Twenty-five-year depreciation. Okay. And all of these comptroller qualify under a 25-year depreciation?
I'm not sure what you're looking for, number one. Number two, the school would make a determination on how they're going to allocate that depreciation. But I've seen their stuff. I can't comment.
Okay. Mr. Sebers, the value, I asked the question of, what's the value of the Midstate building? Who owns that building? Mr. Sebers, the value, I asked the question of, what's the value of the MidState Building? Who owns that building?
The building, the building is owned by the city of Stevens Point.
Okay. So we own the building, and I know we pulled out those leases this afternoon, and they leased the building from us through the several incarnations of those leases that we found through the clerk's office, correct?
That's correct.
In that lease agreement, does it have a stipulation in there for how we dissolve the lease?
I think that's a question you have to ask the city attorney.
Okay. We'll go to that later, I suppose. The calculations that you have here, and I haven't, this is the first time I've seen it. So can you briefly give me an overview of what information is here?
Sure. I'll walk through my handout. On page two, I prepared MidState Technical College cost approach. I use costs from Marshall and Swift, which is a national costing corporation that is based in California. They do costing of properties all around the entire nation, are actually the most reputable. I used 36,000 square feet as the size of the building. Marshall and Swift gives us a base cost per square foot of $136.96, and then they adjust that for the location in the United States where this building is located. The nearest location I can find is Warsaw, Wisconsin. There is not a specific location for Stevens Point. So you modify that for Warsaw to equal $143.81. That's replacement cost new. If you do the simple math of multiplying that out, replacement cost new is $5,177,160. What I did is I looked at the building, and this is where I had to use my appraisal expertise and gave it an effective age of about seven years old, the current building, and that's due to additions and extensive remodeling that took place. Typical building life for this type of a school building is 50 years. So seven divided by 50 is 14% depreciation, or in other words, the building is 86% good. Multiplying 86% good by the replacement cost new gives a replacement cost new less depreciation of $4,452,358. If you divide that, then by the total square footage of the property, that comes to $123.68 per square foot. Now, earlier today, you and I talked about the original square footage and then the additions. The original square foot, as near as I can tell of the structure, was 17,500 square feet. Doing simple math, taking that 123.68 by 17,500 square feet, comes to a replacement cost new less depreciation of the original structure of $2,164,341. And then if you take that same number by the square footage of the additions of 18,500, comes to replacement cost new less depreciation of additions of $2,288,17. Adding those two together, comes back to the same total of $4,452,358.
So that in your estimate is the value of the building now?
That's correct.
Okay. The mayor's been quoted as saying he was working on this for six months. We have a relocation, basically it's a land swap with MSTC for a building that we own, and we've got 1.85 million, and then another $300,000 on top of that. Looks like MidState's going to be putting in another 1.5 million. And I asked you these questions to verify that we had a fair, even-up, or reasonably close land swap. When was the first time you were asked the value of the MidState Building?
I calculated this today.
That's the first time you were asked the value?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't think I have any more for you, Mr. Sebers. Thank you very much for doing all that research for me today. I really appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, if you could direct the question to the city attorney, what is it going to take for us to get out of that lease? What's the grounds to dissolve that lease?
Well, let me say this to start out. First of all, the term, this contemplates 25 years of leasing. And the termination provision also contemplates that we would continue to lease the building to MidState. However, as the contract says, if no successive renewal is negotiated between the parties, the Lessor shall acquire title to the improvements located on the demised premises as may have been constructed by LSE. Lessor, that's the city, agrees to reimburse LSE an amount equal to the depreciated value of the improvements constructed by the LSE using a straight-line 25-year depreciation schedule. That's basically what that provides for.
Okay. And that's based on a mutually agreed-upon dissolving of the lease, correct? We're only obligated to pay those improvements if it's mutually agreed upon. Is that what that lease is saying?
No, it doesn't. It indicates that notwithstanding the fact we do not negotiate a new lease, we would agree to buy or reimburse MidState on a straight-line 25-year depreciation the improvements that were made to the building by MidState during the course of their lease.
Okay.
So, for example, if on year one, they built the new building, and the building was X dollars, it's been there for 25 years, we wouldn't be reimbursing anything for that. But let's say in the, in the 10th year, they put an addition on the building or put all new windows in the building, then we would be, under that scenario, we would, we would owe them the difference between the 25 years and the 10 years that they did not receive credit for. So they would receive a 10 years of the 25.
Okay. Thank you very much. The lease goes till when?
The lease goes to the year-
Current lease.
Of 2016, if I recall.
Okay. So another-
December, the last day of 2000, December 31st, 2016, four years, six years from now.
Okay. All right. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I have some questions for Joel, Director Lemke. The two line items that I need some more clarification on are the children's museum/other building costs and the Third Street parking and demo. We've got $100,000 for what says the children's museum and other building costs. I was, am I to understand that that is going to be used for, or that are, those are your estimates, for putting the facade back on the stage/Dunham's building, the Shopko building, the end of what would be MidState and the children's museum, all four?
Anything attached to the building, I didn't estimate. The parking lot, the demolition, stuff like that, I did.
Okay. Well, then I'll go right to that one. The Third Street run-through, the parking lot, and the demolition, you have is 1.04 million. Do we have a breakdown of what it costs, for example, to run Third Street through, to demolition of the building? And are we using city staff to do that? Are we going to be contracting with that?
The estimate was broken down a little more within that, so we do, we do have those numbers. The, the costs were actually estimated at contracted costs, what we've seen out of contracts most recently, to get the most accurate price we could.
Okay. If you could, I'll swing by or you can email, email me the breakdown of those numbers. I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, then, who came up with the number for the $100,000 for the children's museum and other building costs?
The other building costs, we did through estimates with Ella Stone and the Department of Public Works.
Okay. And I was correct in the assumption that that's the facade for all of the, what will be exposed, building fronts, Dunham's, stage-
The closing in of the Dunham's building on the south wall is included in the $1,041,000. The children's museum, Shopko, and other ancillary costs would be associated with a $100,000 number.
And then for the treasurer, just to reiterate, we would have, based on this bonding for 20 years, this would be 20-year bonding, correct?
Correct.
And you had mentioned that it would work out to about 27.8 cents per $1,000 of value on property taxes. Is that also correct?
That is correct.
And yet we would also be losing the current assessed value of the mall, which has diminished significantly in the past couple of years. As of 2010, the mall assessed, or property taxes on the mall would be $25,421, and the Dunham/Stage building would be $6,500. So we'd be losing approximately another $31,000 in tax base, or taxes on those two parcels. Is that also correct?
That's based on occurring your tax bill.
Thank you very much, everyone, for answering all my questions. I'm sure I'm going to have more. As I said before, I'm not yet opposed to the project. I can't say I'm in favor of it. I don't think I have enough information yet. But this is the preliminary resolution, and I hope we all have enough questions to keep city staff busy for the next 30 days or so, so I will be in favor of this. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Moore.
I just wanted to get a couple of things straight on this plan that the building directly adjacent to the now Dunham building, that would be to the east, that is not an actual building that is being presented as being built. That is just a placeholder for a future space, correct?
That's correct.
So we are not actually building any other buildings in this project?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for some of the people. I too am in support of this. We have gone a very long time hearing about the demise of our mall, and what are you going to do about it? We've been asked that question since the first year I've been on council, and it was asked councils previous to that. We need to do something. This is not a rush. There is going to be plenty of opportunity for public input. We are going to listen to them. We are listening now, but we do need to move forward with this project.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Malison.
Aye.
Suomi.
Aye.
Omira.
Aye.
Wiza.
Aye.
M. Strick.
Aye.
Slowinski.
Aye.
Tribatesky.
Aye.
Molsky.
Aye.
R. Strick.
Aye.